So, acoustics in here are pretty good. Everybody can hear me right? They're pretty good, you may not hear them, but this, the others.
Okay, appreciate it. If somebody has difficulty hearing you, let me know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you all for coming. My name is Todd Whitaker. This is Tom Hawk. He's the mine manager, plant manager. I'd like to thank Todd Pryor, now manager here at Superior, for helping us organize this. When I was preparing for this, I told Thomas today, I considered making a PowerPoint and coming up with some very specific talking points, and I decided that was the wrong way to do it. That was too much talking at you rather than talking with you. So, this is going to be very, very abnormal. Going to give you a little bit of history of that area out there and what we're doing now. And hopefully field questions. There are some things I know. For those of you who have lived here a long time, I'm sure you know quite a bit more about that area and its history than I do. So, in the 90s, Immeris, or its predecessor, acquired two operations out there. The Harborlite operation, which is what we do, what we're continuing on as, and the Nord operation. The Nord operation is out where Forest Service Road 4 is right now. At the time, Nord was producing about 15,000 tons a year. It was a very small operation. They were making a product that couldn't fit well with what we do now or what we did then, so we simply closed them down. And that would have been around 1993, 94. Since that time, nothing has gone on out there. And the local sportsmen and the people in the area have sort of formed that into the area that they use for outdoor activities. Fishing, hunting, not fishing obviously, hunting. Probably would have had good luck fishing out there. But, and that's the way it's been up until just recently. We now have an opportunity to get back into a market, which would be a bad bet pages to us. And we're doing some mining out there, as you're aware. We're in the early stages of that. We're not sure whether it's going to increase, decrease, or how exactly it's going to go forward. But in order to ensure your safety, and Immeris is a safety leader in the world, we have to keep people out of there. It's just too dangerous with mining equipment out there. So, this is all on patented claims. Without going too far down the rabbit hole of patented claim, before 1991, is that when the moratorium came on? You could simply go out onto public ground, do exploration, and prove that there is the existence of a valuable mineral there. And once you did that, the government would essentially give you the deed for that property. And then you have full deed of rights, access to surface, access to minerals, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what we have out there, is six Nord patented claims. So, we're, even though we haven't kept the public off and restricted access historically, we're doing that now. In addition to Immeris' safety concerns, they're also very interested in maintaining community relations. So, if you're upset because of something we're doing, we want to hear about it. So that's why we're here tonight. And like I say, I don't know everything about the situation. I would like to answer any good questions that I can. If I can't answer a question, then I'll see if I can find an answer. So, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Hi, I'm Jim Shank. I'm on the board of Lost Legends of Superior. And my understanding is that you met with the town and you said there would be a way to access Arnett Canyon's trail. And I realize that some of the reason people are upset is that they didn't understand that Forest Service Road 4 ends and it becomes your property. But that's, you know, that's been the access to Arnett Canyon.
Sure.
Farther up, it's the Lost Trail. Eastern end is all Forest Service. And they just went through and they improved it. It's extremely popular. Believe me, when the fall comes again, you'll be hearing a lot from people in charge. So, I understand that you're going to provide access, but the real question is when, where?
That's a fair question, and I don't have a good answer for you. And I don't think any amount of research will change that. I will commit to you that we are proceeding with this and trying to find an answer. I've spoken with the Forest Service. We're exploring some options. Tom and I talked about some things that we might be able to do today to allow limited access, tightly controlled access through there. So, we're looking at options. If you have a suggestion or a workflow for that, I'd be happy to hear it.
I don't have any suggestions.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And, no, but there are people that we work with that I think would come up with ideas. I just, this is the end of, middle of July. I think you've got about six weeks before it starts getting interesting.
Sure.
And so, you know, I'd rather find a solution, because believe me, I get a lot of, I handle a lot of the, at least online, all the people that are very unhappy.
Sure.
And so, it's best if we can tell them. The more that we can tell people, the better.
Well, is he talking specifically about the core of, the conservation core, area where we were today?
I believe so. Will you put the rocks next to the river, river?
Yeah, but I mean, that doesn't have to be the access. You know a way to get into Arnett Canyon. Yes, that is a tradition.
Okay. That's particular, I'll get to you in just a moment. That's particularly problematic, because it's right there where we're operating.
Yeah, the question is, how do we go around that?
Yeah, yes.
I'm not, I'm not saying you guys don't have a right to work here.
But we're, we're interested in providing that. I realize that that's a value to Superior and the National School, so we'll work on that. Again, if anybody has any suggestions on how we might solve this, I'm happy to hear them. If you didn't sign in, please do so. There's business cards back there. Please feel free to contact me. If something doesn't get asked, or you think of something afterwards, please email me or give me a call and we'll discuss it. So, yes?
I think from our, and we've come for many years here to Arnett Canyon, and the Forest Service has done so much love to our work there. And we just had no idea this was happening. And so, for years, we organized hikes and it's such a wonderful area. And so, we're just really hoping to come up with a solution.
Sure.
To still be able to, you know, come here and enjoy the land.
No, we're very committed to.
You know, we turn them through, calendar and schedule our hikes, and now I'm like, oh my goodness, this is happening.
Do those hikes always start in mountainous spots?
Well, we always come, you know, it's like Arnett Canyon, it's beautiful. It's a wonderful place.
That used to be a prime entrance.
Yeah.
And now you can come in from, you can come in from the Pickett Road, Australia. You can come in from up over, from within our city. But that's a prime entrance. A number of people literally park there and they're going out of there.
And it's not just people from here, you know, this, all over.
Sure.
Very, it's just beautiful. Wonderful. More than people that live in the suburbs. So, have you seen a solution?
There's, there's two paths to this. There's off-highway vehicle, the trail for vehicles, and then with the foot trail. I suspect the off-highway vehicles will be slightly easier to solve. The foot trail, a little bit more difficult to solve, but.
The beauty is to, to this selection.
Yeah, sure, sure. So, I wish I had an answer. I wish I could promise you that we'll have an answer in a timeframe. I just don't know that we will, quite honestly. From a legal standpoint, we cannot have people on the property at all. It's not out of the question that we could come up with a solution where if we knew that we weren't mining, we could escort people through that area or if we knew in advance, but just tightly controlled access to it. My legal people aren't going to like that.
And I, I can tell you that the tightly controlled access is not going to work.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't, we're sitting. That the tightly controlled access is not going to work, because a lot of the people that come and use that trail, they're not signing in with it. They're not, you know, they're, they're just going over and over.
Absolutely.
And what's caused some real consternation most recently is people are coming in from the other side and they realize it can't go out.
It's supposed to go over to the other side, isn't it?
It is now. It's, it's Forest Service's.
Let me get to you.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you talked to me like it's not a priority as far as us having a way to get into, I recall David Mountain, Fall of Wrath, Ajax Mine, you know, to Rock's Tammany. I mean, there's only one way in and one way out. And it sounds like there's a priority to keep it open.
I'm sorry if that's how it sounds. It is a priority.
Okay, and then another thing too. I mean, you're actually, you're actually going to be mining the creek itself, you know? The operation is going to extend into the creek, Arnett Creek?
No, there would be no mining in the creek. Even though that's on private property, we have an obligation to keep that.
So, so the entrance, which is south of the creek, why can't this thing open?
Because of mining operation, because of equipment that will be operating.
But you're not going to be, like you said, you're not going to go into the creek.
No, but there's, there's, there's a, the old Chicago pit is on the other side of the creek, right?
Probably.
Yeah. So.
Because there would be no mining at the creek or south of the creek, right?
South of the creek, yes.
South of the creek, yes?
Yes.
And that's the old Chicago pit.
Yeah.
There would be some mining there. There's, there's reserves there that we would tap into, but we're not going to be in the creek at all. Our creek is not, we're not having interest in that, in that canyon or whatever.
Yeah, because I mean, it would cut off water, water in Canyon, you know? Which, there's very little water going through there anyway.
Sure. Yeah, we're, we're very, very careful with waterways, my areas. Tom comes from a background of environmental health and safety, and you're way more knowledgeable about it than I am. So, we'll, we'll do everything possible.
Just stay clear of being.
Yeah, absolutely.
At all costs.
Yes.
What's the, what's total footprint you expect and what's your plan to able to develop in there?
It's really out in the air. It's crystal ball work at this point. We're very, very preliminary. It would be pure speculation on my part.
Are you, are you planning on exploring outside the private, the patented mine area?
No.
I mean, you know, the north side of the creek, you already have that area blocked off.
Yes.
And, and, and either that you're really mining in there, or the north side.
I mean, it's very preliminary at this point. We have several different areas where we've taken samples.
There's five areas that have been identified so far. There's the old Chicago pit, and that's the one that's to the south of Arnett. And there's a one that's to the north of Arnett, is called New Chicago pit. Both of those have wild reserves that we're likely going to tap into. So, it's just a matter of you having a safe corridor for folks to come on a hike and whatnot, next to the creek, and us still doing our mining business. So that, we've got to find some way to dovetail that together.
So, how far south do you're planning to go?
Well, I guess that is probably past that.
This is the old Chicago pit. This is the pit that's to the south of Arnett Creek. Arnett Creek is right there. Our patented claims are represented in pink here, so perhaps, I left the scale off of this. 300 feet past the top of that high wall there, so it would go over the backside of the hill, so.
Does that show Thompson Canyon there?
I'm not sure where Thompson Canyon is. I'm not familiar with the area.
No, no, it's on. It's to the right. Where the road turns south there.
Where the road goes down to Thompson, where it drops off to Canyon.
This is a, this is regional. This is a plant site here, so there may, it may show it more clearly on.
You say it's real tricky on the trail, but for the hunters to get to where they want to hunt, that's, that's a pretty good possibility by creating another road?
Correct. The ideal solution, and this is not something that's going to happen immediately, would be to create a new road which skirts the private area, the mining area, and comes back in and joins road before here. So, it would essentially come from here, down to here, and then across. As you're aware, putting a road over Forest Service ground is not an easy process or quick, so.
Quite a few hurdles to have to get through on that.
Yeah.
Our supervisors actually expressed to us that they would be willing to do that. We've got to keep the public safe. These are possible reserves that we should go into. They're looking at possible, at Forest Service, because it's a good blessing to do that for the public.
Yeah, Immeris has stepped up and said they'll do the dirt work if we can get it permitted. But permitting is the difficulty, it looks like, but like we.
So, is the expansion a done deal?
Yeah. The scope of the expansion is not a done deal. That our access to these reserves here and these reserves here, that is a done deal, so.
Those are your highest value?
Yes.
Can, can those exist even then?
Yes, right. And really, as a, as a good neighbor, our job is to keep you safe, not you specifically, but the general public safe. And the best way to do that is to keep them out of there.
So, if I understand correctly, where the, where Forest Service Road 4 is, where it hits the pink again, it's going, it's going onto your property?
It actually goes on this claim over here and goes back in there. This is, I'm led to believe, this is historically Forest Road, or Forest Service Road 4 here.
Oh, okay.
So.
Where's Arnett Trail?
I don't know.
The creek right here, right? It's right on this side. It's, it's right in here. It just puts these two pits.
None our segment. Our segment is.
Our segment is.
But the other linking connection back to Forest Road 4, that's the Forest Service, Arnett Canyon.
Our, ours goes to, I don't know, out here that comes up. And this part here is just, it's Forest Service. But, you know, most people, they don't like the protection from the forests, the Lost.
What's a shaded area? Why is it shaded?
That the pink shaded area is our patented claim, that's the private land. And at the time I printed it in my office, it was much more just a convenient creed. I don't know if it's not.
I have a couple of questions. First, the, what's your life span for the Old Lost? Do you like to come to United States?
It's a very good question, because, because we're talking historic data down there. I don't believe we have good drill data, good modeling of the Old Lost, so that's hard to say. That's one piece. The other piece of it is, is they don't want to be used up. So.
The other question is, if you're talking, if your primary goal is a forestry walk around, the EA could take years. Is there a temporary solution you consider in the meantime?
Maybe not a question for me, as.
I guess, and this is, unfortunately, the forestry is concentrated, they do, they do trail concentration and they eliminate other side roads. So this is really the only path through all of those heavily, very heavily used recreational areas. And all the old, this is called it, the historic mining districts in the middle of the quad and down the Eagle River. And this is a huge, huge, huge area. So, if you're telling us the EA, that's several years, being shut down for several years, it's probably going to be very contentious.
Well, there's, an EA for road, for a vehicle road, is different than EA for a motorized trail, I'm led to believe. So there may be some, a way to expedite that. I'm not sure.
Oh, we are sure. You deal with the Forest Service all the time, so does.
So a motorized.
It's not him.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean to indicate that, but depending on what type of trail that goes in or road, it might make a difference.
Motorized trail is for full-size four-wheel drive vehicles. Basically two blocking drills that I'm sure, whereas a road is something that can be taken, like a stock three-four. So, it's slightly different on there. I'm there wearing an impact study, but it's not huge. Not, probably talking the same kind of thing. The overall, the trail is very important for a lot of reasons, from one of those. For example, would be maintenance of the earth or trail, just to add some question trails through there. And you can't afford the difference a lot, trail teams in and out of there. And often they kind of need stock trail trailers, and so it, it needs to be a road.
Yeah. Yes.
Is there any chance that you could take and put in a second road, trail off to resist the road? And set it off to, that is the access for more for.
The issue isn't specifically where the road is. The issue is that the road is across private property where we're going to be running a mining operation. So, I don't know.
And you take it, you have clear access to the Pimmel Creek Mine all the way down through the, up to there, and that's the entrance stop. But if I had been playing all through there, there may be an enforcement law to cause it to be a problem.
Well, that's something that I am not knowledgeable about, honestly. I don't know why there was a forest service road, a public road on private property. That shouldn't be the case. My, my guess is that when the patented claim in 1980, there was no quads. They were doing side-by-sides. There was no racers, so that road got.
The road was there. It was there.
No, no, I'm not saying that the road wasn't there. I'm just saying that it was a very, very likely news, so the notion of moving it away from.
No, it doesn't matter, it's still there.
It was, it was public access as far as that being made on it.
And it's back, or it might support the Ajax Mine as well, so it's likely a key territorial road, which gives it special legal status. So, it's, it may be something that your attorneys have given it on, but the road may have status beyond your point of view of that. And the properties that use it as primary access, and they have broader access, it may, but they generally, it's a pre-territorial road. It was put in to support a mining operation. Generally implies that there's a title on the road. So, if somebody owned the Ajax Mine, it would be a title on the road. So, it's, that's a question for your legal advice, and it's very complex. But, yeah, it is, as a pre-territorial road, again, it does have special status, and it may, it may not be an access you can close off completely without a permit.
Have you talked to the Forest Service at all?
Go ahead. They, they don't have an immediate solution.
Are there any other old roads that could be used?
I'm not familiar with the area.
To dance somehow?
Perhaps, perhaps. The road going down to Party evidently, there's a series of trails, and I'm sure you all know more about that than I do. But there's an option, perhaps, coming in from that direction. So, yeah, hope you build a road. We have an ongoing dialogue with the Forest Service.
I think you, the Forest Service, and a, and maybe a committee of people from here need to get together.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I think the Forest Service, you, and a committee of people from here need to get together.
I'm glad you got that idea.
I do, I do think we need to be clear, that if there's not a solution to this, you know, timing, it will cause economic damage to come. I mean, Superior is positioning itself as a recreational destination. That Arnett Canyon road has been, the trail has been very much promoted, and it's gotten a lot of, it's gotten national recognition. And to suddenly have it pulled out from under us, I mean, first of all, you guys, there was a lot of points, I just closed them. Why did you not come and talk to the town first? I have no idea. But I, I've been in the community development business. I've represented mines as a community manager. You guys have zero, you're going everything back.
Yes.
And so, we need to work on this.
I'll get to you in just a moment. Go, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, just along with Jim is saying, I'm totally disappointed just in the last 15 minutes that you guys didn't stand in right there. You're not from here, I don't know where you're from. You said it's overdone, you're not from here. You come, you're prepared with a map that we can't even see. There's no over there. I don't even hear you guys talking about mitigation. You're just telling us, we're going to mine, and we have legal challenges. That's what we're hearing. You know, you guys didn't come to the town, you didn't look out the trail service, you didn't look up the Pickett Road. You know, it's like, they're coming to us and said, oh, we're going to mine because we've got mining claims. Well, we deal with other mines here that have mining claims, that have claims. You guys are falling real short. This is, you guys, day one. It sounds to me like, hey guys, we're going to mine because we can. And you know what? We'll have to work out legal issues later. We'll close the trail. Yeah, we're working with the Forest Service. And then what I'm not hearing is that we're working on mitigation plans. It's, well, we've got to get back to the attorneys, you've got to get back to that. That's, that's not going to fly here. That is not going to, you guys are totally unprepared, totally not good for this type of audience right here. We've been down this road many, many, many times, so.
Can you bring, Jim, the role of this, like, resolution? But they have patented land, and the Forest Service has never stood up for the public against even ranchers that have patented land.
They could have done a few diligence and maybe reached out to the town.
Well, that would have been nice.
Yeah, well.
But let's not piss them off. Let's work together.
Well, I think we're kind of pissed off already.
Well, I know, but.
I'm sorry about that.
No, I'm not just on the way up, because, you know, basically.
I appreciate that, that's why I.
No, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and sugarcoat and be nice. If you come short, and the way I feel you're coming up short, you're short.
Then I want to hear that. That's exactly why I'm here.
I'm not going to tell you that any of those nasty secrets, but totally prepared from my part.
Perfect. I'm glad you said that. I appreciate that. I value your opinion, and that's why I'm here. Awesome. I, I want to get the concerns out, and I want to discuss possible options, and I understand you're upset.
Well, I think there's nothing you can do.
I suspect there is.
So, let's get together and let's work together.
We're not opposed to, we're not opposed to.
No, we're fully in favor.
We want to, like, like Todd said, we want to be good neighbors. We're really good. And I'm sorry to let you feel the way you do, but we have an obligation to protect people from getting harmed. I love Jill Norey that was driving the excavator, and there were racers flying by and just waving at. You ruin that kind of liability, if that was your company, would you?
You know, don't start telling me about legal. We understand that.
I'm just saying, that's not legal.
We totally, we are understanding that as a community. We understand the legal requirement. You know, you don't have to comply here, because we've been dealing with that for a long, long time. One day we had access, the next day it was thrown off.
You guys have been a company here for like 80 years now, and there's never been an issue. You guys have never shut down, you've always been good neighbors. Then now you come in, boom, throw some rocks in the road, and everything's shut down. Come the fall, you're going to have people trespassing through there, going around your boulders and everything, because when the snowbirds come, they use that road daily. It's like a highway. And you're going to have them going around there, and, and they're going to disrespect your land. So, the best thing for you to do is to provide access to that road. If you want to keep a good neighbor policy around here, that's the best thing you could do.
I apologize for the abruptness of it. We are a for-profit company, and we had an opportunity here. And we're exercising our right as landowners, and we are trying to do so with your feelings and, and activities considered.
You know what? You wouldn't be standing here, we didn't realize you were a for-profit, and exercising your right. I mean, not even, just you saying that, it's not just regardless, you understand that. You wouldn't be doing it if you worked for a company, you're a for-profit, but that, that's like just hitting us over the head. We're a company, we're going to finish money, and we'll work on it, no problems later, and make it inconvenient for you.
I was just offering that as an explanation for the abruptness.
Yeah, we understand that. You're not standing here because you're going to be a breaking in company here, because you're going to make profit. Hopefully you bring some jobs, but there's other aspects of it, you know, based on all this stuff that we have to deal with, Forest Service and other mines.
The, the, our first concern is safety. Safety for our employees, safety for our contractors, safety for.
We can make a safe access road.
Right, right. It's not simple, it's just saying.
You do need to provide an access road.
It's not simple, as you say.
And it has to be done by the fall, I would say.
Yes.
So, you obviously blocked the road up, which is on, on, what's the real timeframe for action, for no action? What's the meaningful opportunity that makes it back?
That is a little bit outside of my hands. It is something that the Forest Service is researching right now. What they have for options, they have been out and looked at the property. I've spoken with them in person and numerous times on the phone. I know they spoke with Tom. So, there, there's work being done. We're, we're addressing this problem. I don't have a timeframe. I don't have a deadline, a date that I can provide you. I wish I did. It would be much easier.
I think it's crucial between you and the Forest Service to come up with a notional schedule of when the new patch, when you're going to hit hardest. And we've got a problem now with all these people, but people are going to get more and more alarmed if they don't see a notional schedule at least of when some decisions will be made, so it can affect. You know, important to those decisions to make in our choice. of when some decisions will be made so it can affect, you know, import into those decisions and make it our choice. I mean, if you went around the bottom of the building, the property, that would take some time to build.
Sure. It'll take some time to build, and it will take some time to permit.
Right, and so, we need some windows. We need some open communication and opportunities. So, the people here in the city, and whoever they can, and it's the Forest Service, still has to be involved in all the cycles.
And that's why we're here. Is to get you, give your opinions and your input and your frustrations. Anybody who's got a question?
I, I have a couple of questions. And one, for the public. Tom did come in and talk to the town right after the road was blocked. And, you know, the rub was notified. He did come in, and there was a discussion about finding mitigations and finding some solutions. I will admit, I'm a bit, I'm extremely concerned that we're at this meeting. I was really hoping, and I tried to give these fine people here some assurances that we were hoping we were gonna come here and know what the mitigations would and could be. And instead, we're back here, much like every other situation that we go through in an extraction company with a lot of unknowns. We don't know. We can't answer this. So, what needs to, you need to take home to your corporate offices is that a solution needs to be done immediately. Because what I'm concerned about is that clover's gonna roll around really fast. And we're gonna be the ones bombarded with people that are upset that Forest Road Four is not open. It's gonna become a health and safety issue for our public, our safety responders. Because people are gonna come out, and they don't know, or they ignore, they ignore signs. People do this all the time. And then who's gonna be rescuing these people when it's too dark for them to turn back to Ajax Mine and all of that? We've worked far too hard to build up the infrastructure on the access to Arnett Canyon. This is critically important to the town. But I also wanna hear from Mr. Dunn and the ranching community. Because while I'm concerned about the economic impact this is gonna have to Superior's, I'm concerned about our local ranchers that are out there and have cattle allotment out there. How does this affect them? Is this gonna end up affecting the bottom line of that industry? Because we're not communicating here. Because I will agree, I think in some corporate communication, while you were doing this, some earlier notification and communication would've helped. Because now I've gotta go and get on the phone with Mr. Bosworth and Mark Sando and put my hair on fire that the Forest Service needs to fix this. And I feel like I shouldn't have to always have the town's hair on fire because, you know, a corporation isn't thinking things through. So, I want, I'd like to hear from Mr. Dunn and the ranchers. I wanna see if this is gonna have, what effect this has on them and access to their allotments.
Well, you don't know what Bill, you see what the plan is. And that's why I was asking, you know, table and everything, and help feed a footprint. Uh, it, it bends it all off, which I guess I would do if it were my plan. Well, it's gonna affect us. But, um, they've been, they've been good neighbors so far because our cattle run, you know, all around our pit. I don't get, I can't... Unless they have to build a road, you know, over into Thompson Rock, that will affect us.
Let me say one thing. We've been waiting for nine years from the Forest Service to let us put a water line in on top of the ground by a road.
I was just gonna say the same thing, actually, the same thing. I'd like to take the set of water tank out for a need and everything else. Right on the edge of the road, all you gotta do is sit on the side of the porch. Take ten, fifteen years to set it, got nice stuff. Then Bill Dunn buys out of his pocket and sits there and runs water line there. Then, oh, everybody goes out and enjoys the weekend, cuts the lines so they can get some water, shoots holes in the trough that Bill Dunn bought out of his pocket. See? That's what people don't understand. We're just trying to protect the guy on the side beside coming by as I swing around with a bucket of muck and about him. He's on private property. You know, I wouldn't gonna say anything, but, you know, I was gonna ask Bill the same question. "I'll have to take the Forest Service to get something out of your rent." Now, this is private ground. This isn't a permit through the Forest Service. This is private ground. And I agree with the road that goes to Ajax Mine and ends up in Cocon's and ends up in Florence. Fact of the matter is, it's on private ground. And if it was a deeded road to their, it would say on their deed. It would say excluding Road Four across your property.
You were also saying private road, and there's no signs saying this is private property.
Well, there's been, every time I set a sign up, there's left line. I was out there digging in that pit on the other side of Arnett Creek, waiting for a truck standing there. And I got bullets whizzing over my head on private property. Every time I set a sign up, it gets shot or it gets thrown in the creek.
Wow, that's, that's another issue.
And that's not, I'm not saying it's the people here in Superior's, people just come in and do stuff. You know, we, I was in there for Memorial Day weekend, blading the road up so I could have trucks there Monday. And I got thirty-five side besides on my butt, on the mine. Came right through the gate, 'cause it was open, with no trespassing, active mining areas, big signs. I've had two buses come in there to pick Apache Tears, right past the signs. So, you know, it, it, I got people there at two o'clock in the morning when I go, and they're picking Apache Tears. Twelve of them in the back of a truck. I tell them the cops are coming. They take the side road, and people bouncing in the back. I do it for fun. They don't ever come back. But, uh, you know, I don't, I don't wanna live the rest of my life knowing I knocked somebody out with a bucket. You know? The, the people that I'm upset that, by blocking the, blocking the road, and they can't get into the creek and whatnot, I understand. But until the Forest Service says, "You guys can put a road around that thing for my safety and everybody else's safety," there's, there's no rea, if you need access in there, you call Tom. I'll take the burn down. You guys can go in there for an emergency something or other. Get somebody out, or somebody's gotta get their forward route, 'cause it's closer to gun that way. That's understandable. But just to have seventy-five of them go through there just so they can make it, you know? It, it's, it wasn't a safe road at the beginning. In fact, it took me six hours to get a loader across the creek, you know?
That's why, that's why you have them to use or, that's how Mr. Dunn...
Well, I understand that. But every, every, every dirt burn, I thought, "Oh, heck, I'll keep these guys out." And then I come right into it.
We already lost, we lost access because of flatlanders. Because of these seventy-five members of Brooklyn here, we lost access to the Forest Road. Now, we're losing access over here.
Yeah, we're losing access daily. We've got the miners coming in up here, mining cadens up here, the wilderness burned down. Now, you guys are blocking roads out here.
You know, I, I enjoyed this area all my life. The child, all these people there, all our life, we've enjoyed playing out there. If, I wanna go out there on the weekends. It's just like the city out there.
But it's horrible.
It is horrible. But I, I understand people wanna go out there. They wanna enjoy themselves too. I can accept that fact. I just go a little bit of, go out there on the weekend.
Well, you know, here's, for instance, I packed two ten-wheeler loads of garbage out that I picked. I cleaned it up and then come back after Memorial Day weekend, and there was two piles again.
I see it every day, whenever it is. My mom, I, I see it every day.
No, it's too much longer a problem than...
No, you're right. It's not...
It's too long.
Yeah.
So, it sounds, it sounds like there are many things that you don't know because, you know, people you work with, they have to make the decisions. I'm thinking our mayor needs to make a trip to France.
Lady France.
Well, yeah, to London. Now it's time to go to France.
I would, I would be surprised if you could get away with an E A on putting another road in. I'll bet that'd require you to fully I A. That'd take three, four years.
Depends on how long it is, right?
Yeah, you're right. They make up the rules.
If you got a strong mayor, don't you...
Well, but they'll get sued if they don't...
You got some...
Um, that must wanna be necessary. We all want to find a solution. And so, that, that's what, what I would request is please do look for solutions. I know that there, there are things that, you know, I just looked at the map, and it shows the road on eighteen seventy-seven map of the year to year. So, it's, it's a very old road. So, we would love to see it activated. We'd love to see it before the tourist season. So, the mayor and I do not, we're put in a position where we have to be taking very adversarial positions. And we're, right now, we're all working together, and it's, it's a excellent time to find out, uh, a good solution. And what we would request is that, you know, from listening, we're saying that we're not ready to have solutions yet. Um, we would like at least to know when we could have a meeting to see what the solution is. Um, and if we have to advocate for the Forest Service or something else. Because the Forest Service has done a lot of work to concentrate the traffic onto that road. And every, every side road's been ripped up or taken off the transportation plan. That is the only road on the Tono National, uh, on the, on the Tono Travel Management Plan that goes that direction. All the rest are, are abandoned roads. We can't use it. And they will be going in and destroying these roads. So, if, if we don't get this road fixed, it cuts off a swath of land about, or ten thousand square miles out there that we can't get to anymore. And it's a major recreation thing for the community. It's a major thing to do. The town, historically, is where everybody goes, hunts, plays, works. And we want to be able to throw those options. We're talking a very short stretch of road across, that, that blocks off a huge chunk of land. So, there's gotta be a solution.
I think we're not, me personally, without leaving here today, I kinda gonna, I'm gonna leave. Hopefully, it doesn't come true. I feel like I'm gonna walk out of here, but you guys came here to check the box. Well, we came here, we knew we were gonna get some hostile feedback, but we checked the box, and we're gonna move forward. And, you know, maybe you drag your feet, maybe you don't. But that's my, I'm gonna walk out of here. Like, you just check the box. Oh, we gotta do this. Check, 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 check. Knowing there's gonna be resistance. So, I'm very proud, you know, hopefully that changes. And that's our next meeting. I know what that's gonna be, that we come up with a different... It feels a little bit different. Right now, it doesn't feel very good.
Yes.
How often do you meet with the Forest Service? Who makes freedom?
It's not a regular man. No. I spoke with them yesterday, and it's my understanding that they will be here next week sometime. I won't be. I don't need to talk. So...
So, there's no one from the legal department that can answer questions, decide to do this?
Uh, at this point, it doesn't feel like a legal issue to me.
There are no...
Um, it's, it's a problem that needs to be solved. Immerse, Immerse's obligation is to keep people safe. And we've done that. We've created a problem for the town, and we're here trying to address that. And I'm sorry if you feel like we're checking the box. This isn't on my job description. I'm here because I realized there's a problem. And Tom told me that there's a problem, so it feels like happening.
So, how will we know?
Um, my business cards are right there. Call me. Call me.
Also, keep Todd and Luke, as far as what I know. I mean, I've been quite a few times with Todd already. In fact, I actually let him know quite a bit ahead of, why we even met, that this was coming down the pipe. And I said, "I'm sure I'm gonna be upsetting a lot of people." And, um, that's the case. But we're not checking the box. I hike, and I, I like off-roading as well. I mean, I, I feel for you guys. I do. Um, I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not, I mean sincerely. But, um, this is a problem. I think we can find a solution. I like your idea, Matt, as far as, there's gotta be some roads that the Forest Service can go, "You know what? This is, we can do this." And my motto is, if that's the case, we'll do it.
Especially if they're closing the side roads. And they're closing a whole lot of roads in the travel management. Roads that we, that they shouldn't be. They're keeping the public off the public lands. Uh, so, I'm not real thrilled with Forest Service. But there's gotta be some old roads that we should be able to connect somehow and get fast track through the Forest Service. There's gotta be.
And they're making, and that's what we're talking about, right? Is how we're looking to do that. It's a baffled discussion.
Um, so, building on Todd's comments. It's a single exit road on this end. Other than the, the road that connects to Relay Road, connected through your property, there really is nothing. Um, as far as coming out, once you get past, coming from the Florence side, once you get past Telegraph Canyon, there's, there are very little of the old roads that have any speed here straight out. Um, it's pretty critical in that function. Um, the other end of it, maintaining or controlling how people come on and get off, get onto the road from Forest Junction end is pretty difficult because there's such a web of routes over there feeding. And so, on this end, it's totally critical when people get here. They've spent a long amount of time getting here, generally late in the day. Not a good thing to turn around and try to go back over that in the dark. Um, so, that brings the safety part. Um, Pinal Valley was brought up. They do a very good job of providing a visitor access route. I recommend that you guys check that out. They tell you what they use for their legal or how they, how they maintain or run that. If you go out there and you go through it, when you come into the mine itself, you're coming into the big gates of that huge open pit mine. And driving there, you're, you can't go here, huh? But as soon as you start coming into the mining area, there's a series of signs that explain that there's a visitors' route. We track all the routes that we run. And so, when you go through there and you look at the track from the last sign, well, we were way over there, and we were way over there. Depending on how their operation goes, they move that route back and forth. One of the things is to, you know, watch out for mining equipment, anything that has a flag, big trucks, that sort of stuff. Uh, they have plainly, um, set the expectation of people on their property. That this is a, a visitors' route, these are the speed limits, this is how you proceed. And it's not a time to go through there, follow one of the big, big warhol trucks or whatever. You're mixed in, right in the middle of the pit. And they move it back and forth as needed for their operations and maintain a visitor access route right through the open pit mine.
I suspect our safety group will, and I'm absolutely right about that.
So, and so, what you may do with them and see how they do it, and how their results are and that sort of thing. And I'm not saying this would be a long-term thing. But if we could fast-track for us, and we could go around the backside of the hill or lead route from some other way, that may provide a temporary access for some sort of schedule to get us through the early part of the visit season and provide people with access.
And we're open to any compromise that doesn't compromise safety.
So, obviously, you know, you say that you guys are interested in community. There's a recreational music school. It's been meaning for a hundred years. And they've presented a hundred and twenty miles new trail that's gonna be constructed in the area south of town. It all winds up with this. One, I would like to suggest that we attend some of those meetings. As you look at the trails that they've laid out, and a lot of meetings after that, it's gonna be a problem if they can't get into our neck and... So, um, look, this is a mining town. Most of us work for mining companies. We value safety. The best, the best thing a miner does at the end of the day is come home. We're not against safety. But I do believe that there is safe ways to run a road through a pit. And that may be the only answer.
And we're committed to...
So, stay, stay open to the idea.
To, uh, compromise if one of you reach into the panel.
It would remain on these trails, uh, sooner than stopping to... They're part, they're part of the recreational music school.
That's right. They are not communicating. This is, they're making the assumption that we have a forest and control it.
Nothing, the Road Four is not actually part. This is a whole series of roads that hope to be part of an offset, uh, resolution code that we'll help facilitate. They've already been presented. I'm just saying, they're, they're community organizations, in Superior, from the valley. They all participate. If you're interested in what's going on, you should come.
And it's something that also is, you know, effective, is if you look at the Tono National Forest Travel Management Plan and look at how it identifies Forest Road Four. It lists, it is the only road that continues route through this mountain. But it also shows the Immerse pit as a private road in front of it. And it's a tiny little stretch. So, it is on the travel management plan. And it's the height of, of crazy that they just assume that that road is gonna be there because it blocks off an entire range of the forest in that, that road's course. Is it, that's, that's the only one approved on the travel management plan. I would encourage everyone to go to the Tono National Forest Travel Management Plan website. There's an interactive map there. You can pull it up and look at it. And it's quite clearly, it does not include this tiny little section, um, as part of the travel management, as part of the travel, of the forest. But it marked the road, and that road goes in one side and comes out the other. But they have made an arrangement to keep it.
It sounds to me like you need to have a meeting with, with them, with Immerse, the town, and the Forest Service, and the public real soon so they can, they can get a feel too as to how people feel about this. Needs to happen right away. The emails will reply, so it's just... Nothing in the dark, really.
Yeah, I've spoken with the Forest Service.
Do you know this is a twenty-six-nine-nine road?
Huh?
Do you know this is twenty-six-nine-nine of the Forest Road?
Uh, it's marked on the, the travel management plan as, as Forest Road Number Four.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a type of road.
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't looked into it.
Regulation.
I haven't read the full travel management plan because I've got a lot of work in mind of it. But, uh... numbing, but, uh, I would encourage everyone to go research it, look at the letters, there's a little detail. It is the only major collector road in the area.
That is the road number, it's not the, I know there's a type of number four road, but that is the road number. It's number four.
Any other questions, comments? I wish I had really good news, I wish we had a solution that we could put in place tomorrow or next week.
Is it true that, um, under general land, like, if I own forty acres, and my neighbor has forty acres, but we have no road access, and he decides to cut a little corner off and my property, access his property, and if I do nothing about it for ten years, we can have that grandpa dead where it's permanently easier?
You're talking adverse possession, we have to talk about it.
Yeah.
Are we, kind of talk to the same situation here? You had that land in, that was nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty, but you did nothing about stopping the access across that?
I'm not an attorney, and I don't know the, how the law calls in Arizona than in Nevada and in Oregon, adverse possession requires that you fence the land and that you pay some form of monetary consideration, like taxes or improvement of some sort. I don't think that's the case here. There are some laws that, right away, if you want all access, then you can't block all access to somebody and land block. But that's, you, there would have to be somebody behind that who has something on value up there to file this occasion. There are probably six or seven legal challenges that somebody could bring against this. We're hoping to avoid all that by coming forward with a good solution that everybody can sign off on before, otherwise, this is, it's, nobody wants to go to court, nobody can spend our lives in court, lawyers are expensive. If we can come up with a solution that everybody can sign off on upfront, then our lives are much easier. Now, if the Forest has to be involved, forget it, they're gonna take forever. So, I would encourage you to look for areas of private land that you could, uh, could bypass it. I know it's, it's asking a concession, but it also will solve the problem without having to wait for EA or EIS, that, as we all in this room are familiar, could take forever. They are, it just depends on, and what if a rancher says, "I don't want access there," and he puts in negative comments, and then it ends up in a, mitigations for the road, you know, all these things could slow the process very much down. It's much easier with this Forest solution, make a bypassing exist. And I'm not saying what that looks like, I'm saying, please do, thank this to, come up with a solution. We need to look at it. It's, it's all a safety issue. And we're all, everybody here is, I probably bet, for behalf of this firm, has had an MSHA certification at some point in order. We all work on it, and work on mine sites, we all understand those laws, we also understand that they, that MSHA load except for some more combinations in most cases.
It's less an MSHA issue, a more corporate issue, and the level of risk that is accepted by us. And Immeris is more later on safety, and we do not think it compromises.
Correct.
And if there is an area that you're not gonna be waiting in the foreseeable future, you could put a road through that area?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Unfortunately, we...
There's multiple test areas that kind of go south to north, and you'd have to cross that east to west or west to east, so it would, if it was possible, it would be quite complicated.
And then I would really suggest that, look at, see what Pinot Valley's doing, I don't know what...
That's a county road. That's a county road that goes down to the higher bridge.
It's going through private property.
Now, county, I mean, Pinot Valley, that's...
That's Forest Route Four.
What, Pinot Valley?
Five eighty-seven?
Five eighty-seven.
That's Forest?
The county road, they call it county road.
The county can formally adopt it, if there is an economic user on the road, you can apply for title on the road, there's, especially if it's a pre-territorial road for which, you know, that mining operation created it. If there was somebody currently owning or operating Ajax, they could probably get title on this road, they would probably be able to block up access to it, but there's nobody back there, so who's gonna file it now?
Are there any active cluster claims down in Kenny?
Huh?
Are there any active cluster claims?
I'm sure there are. There's thousands of claims back on those mountains and, you know, and, but many of them are accessible from other areas, there are very small mountains that are currently accessible from this side. So, I mean, again, that's, we'd be getting into a lot, whether then reasonable accommodation. And I think if we stay on the area of reasonable accommodation, we can come up with a solution to this. If we end up in court, nobody's gonna be happy, we're all gonna be broke. So, we would try to...
That sounds like what people keep saying, that we don't...
So be generous.
Reasonable compromise, because they can't commit to anything because if the road is on their property, safety includes them from providing answers.
And that, that seems, I, I, again, I'm not, you're a private company, I can't dictate anything, but that seems to be a very, um, permanent statement about something that may not be true. I mean, you ask, guess it's possible, but you haven't checked yet, right? You haven't given them a reasonable accommodation and said, "Could we make this go to work?" Well, as I was explaining before, the sample areas go from the old Chicago in a line from south to north, so in order to cross that, you would have to cross an operational area, and that feels complicated at best. And, and again, and like I said, it's, if, if you can't find a reasonable accommodation, again, if we're back in a position of, it puts us in a very dangerous situation. Like I said, please do try to find something you can do, because otherwise it puts us in a situation where we have to hire our lawyers, and we have to go freezing, and we don't want to do that. The, uh, it seems like a fairly simple thing to talk to, to say, people want to say, "What will work? Here's our problem, what will work?" And yes, if they say, "No private property," then you tell them, "Okay, that's gonna take five years, what are you gonna do in the four-year period until that? When you lose the support of the community because everybody who uses that for recreation, which is pretty much ninety percent of the town, turns on." That, that's just my personal take on it, and I, again, this is early days, and I would encourage us to research a little bit more and come back when we're done. And maybe Forest could be a help. Because Forest, meaning, bears a lot of responsibility in how this is coming down. Um, and back to the top of the table, somebody who actually manages the travel management plan needs to be here to explain how they took a private property road and turned it into a major project. It's, it's kind of ridiculous.
I kind of see that maybe down in Roaden, if you give it this legal fight, and we rally all the recreational users, and you'll see exactly how many people use that, and we're bringing you here out, and we'll expose you guys from what you're doing, and have thousands or two thousand guys on the bus out there knocking on your door, and that's bad press.
And we don't want it to come out.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's possible. That's possible, so...
I'd really like this to be resolved before I have to make another extreme international trip.
They're not any fun, she doesn't get to sightsee what she's there. It drove by one of France's...
Anybody else?
Oh, now, in your advertisement, you talk about that this is gonna create jobs, this is gonna hurt all the environmental concerns, so what's your opposite? We're losing our recreation, are you gonna create jobs, or how does that work out? Your ad in the paper, you talked about economic opportunity, what's going on on Immeris? I thought while we approved your ad, it did say something about your economic opportunity.
Increase, increasing production?
Yeah, increasing, well, maybe we took increasing production as in we were gonna be maybe creating some new jobs or anything like this, is that gonna happen?
It's not out of the question.
But...
It's very, very clear at this point, it's the explorations.
And, and I apologize that we shouldn't have probably asked Tom more of these questions, but when are you going to know something? Are you anticipating gonna have some answers, like two weeks, three weeks, six months?
Don't know for sure, I would guess it's going to be a period of months. It's not reasonable, you know more about it than I do.
The road's gonna be blocked off and can't give us any answers, so October's gonna roll around.
Well, if we're not, if we're not actively going to be in there, and I, I gotta recognize my own situations, of course, but if we're not actively in there, I have no reason to not tell Forest to go over there and, and make it accessible again. But I gotta chase people out once we're back in there, and I don't wanna have this back and forth, but I'm, I'm looking for Tom and Todd, I'm hopeful that I can find some way out of the safety corridor where I can get people to do what they want to do as far as off-roading and whatnot. Let's just assume we're not gonna get any cook for the Forest Service.
I don't see why you couldn't do that. In Pinot Valley, they drive seven miles through the mine before you get to Forest.
And I would look at that, I would look at that.
Right here, it's a quarter mile.
But we had people actually, who were doing some blasting up in that one site, we're calling it Dome Hill, Dome Hill, and there was people in the, in the other side of the pit, over there shooting. So, um, I'm looking to Todd, I mean, I, I really am, I wanna make a compromise if possible, it just depends, Todd, I hope that'd be a little bit, a little bit reserved, because we can't speak for how it's gonna take.
I understand, it's a good idea, but we're hoping that you go and are advocates or corporate for us, and you communicate to them how important this road is to the local community and how we are in a possible situation. They don't have an ultimate road we can develop on our own, so we depend on their help, and we really would appreciate if you could do your absolute best for us and come back and communicate with us as soon as possible so that we can communicate back to our family. We would do that, absolutely.
Do you have a timetable for when the sampling is done?
I believe the sampling is...
We've already started it, I expect it's gonna last about another four months. Okay, so there's five areas we've identified over here, and we've re-sampled one area, and we've actually posted seven here, it's been sent to Austria for testing.
Do you have any idea when the sampling or in the old and new Chicago pit area will be done? Because that's critical for the road.
Right. Um, so...
Old Chicago's already been tested.
Okay. New Chicago's gonna be tested next.
If you do find positive results, how long before you go into pit development?
I would say probably, uh, six months to here.
Okay, so if you finish sampling, you're not actively developing a pit, is there any reason to keep it closed, why you're still...
That's what I'm interviewing.
Well, lower that off on, on the old Chicago, because that's basically where the road is, is on the rim of the old Chicago.
Right.
And, you know, put in the, the concrete barriers, that you can rent lease, build your own, whatever, to guide traffic and keep them to the south of New Chicago or any other exploration work that's being done in the sampling. Put the signs up, violate it, do the shot.
Or remove that, go to the old road.
But if you're not actually operating in there, you've got no equipment in there, there's no reason to block access, it's just a liability to block access.
Well, since that road goes all the way through into the active pit, so people just come up through there and into the pit.
But if the pit, if the pit isn't active, if you're not, if you're not already developing the pit...
Well, the whole thing's considered a pit. The whole thing, the whole thing's the active mine. It's all, it's all active. It's all, when MSHA comes out there, if you want to go out there and see the whole thing. And so I have to have burns, I have to have the high-low scale, I have to have everything in place. So it's, it's, it's all active. So, when, when that burn's taken down, and then the family of site by sites comes in there, they can come right into the pit and go down into the, wherever they want to go, tend to get to the other gate and come back to me and say, "Well, how do I get out?" And I say, "Well, you go back where you came from," because, you know, you're not supposed to get in.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but, uh, I was in mining before this, and we had the mine, and there was a major road that went right through the middle of it, and unless we were actively mining, the mine first stayed open, MSHA never said it worked. Um, the, unless you're running all ax or heavy equipment, there's no reason to shut the road down. MSHA does not fault that, so I don't know why corporate would have been operating when we didn't like it. So, just from a management standpoint.
What we do need to shut it down for, on how we disseminate that information, who's gonna be the support at that point? And quite honestly, the work we've done has loosened up some material in there, so if there's a, a fall rock or the road, it's gonna be a different path, so, you know...
Yeah, these do seem like some valid problems. And again, we changed our route several times, MSHA never had a problem, it had burns on the road and everything else. And Pinot Mountain, the road ends up, the road ends up Pinot Mountain, now the road went back to the middle of it. We didn't put gates on, that's why we're actively mining. And it'll be closed every time here.
Yes, Tom, on the other side of, like, you're pulling down, uh, the other side of the Dazos Pass, if you drop them down, and everybody goes off and left for, for recreational park, or, there's a big fly hole right there, and when those red lights by, the range is hot, and you get down in, they definitely get very kind of bored.
Sure.
And that's how they manage it. Except the gate, and the flag up, and we're, we're, we're close to opening up.
So the, so the best way of combating this is...
The town has a very active social media process, that's why there's so many, we try to get the word out, so you didn't scare as much people. But, and the town can do that if there's some things to closing. That, my concern is that, yes, the permanent solution is the road around, we don't know that's not gonna happen, and the Forest is not. So, what are we doing in the town? And if there's a gap in there where we can keep it open and put the question off, it's just everybody's best interest. And if a year from now, you say, "Okay, we're finally gonna have to reopen," everybody in this room knows why. It's not, are you surprised? And then if you tell them, "Yeah, we're closing down, but the diversion road's opening up in six months, the Forest will come and save us up here," then you don't end up at the back line. It's just, I'm trying to find potential solutions so that we don't just have any recreation right now, and everybody doesn't, you know, the tear goes on fire. We all look in.
And it's seasonal critical, so in the summertime, it's not gonna get any traffic, and you're not gonna get a lot of people upset by it. In the wintertime, especially when there are visiting, that, that trail is heavily, heavily, heavily known, written up by, it's very popular, way between all communities, and so if you're talking hiking, mountain biking, motorized, all of the above.
Sure.
It's every trail book that you can pick up with a bookstore. It's very popular.
But we'll do what we can, do everything that we can. I just appreciate your input.
When we came on our own, we could have each of you, by a simple set of emails, filled us in, or, you know, after, parked about in a flat, with people with their air on fire. So, you know, measured response, seeing how you're going and that sort of thing. But, you know, you talk about safety and economic and all of that, the number of people that are gonna be very disappointed this time, a lot of those people tend to take their disappointment out by destroying stuff in this tunnel, maybe your equipment and, um, so...
You hear it, you're...
The best planning, best route is to figure out a way to make it happen, so we're very hard to go to that.
Even if it's short-term, temporary, intermittent, you know, as you asked about, like, it's both intermittent or whatever, any access is better than no access. Okay? Short-term, long-term, seasonal, whatever it takes.
I will take that message.
We're gonna be at a meeting tomorrow, where there's probably an average of three hundred jeeps every, every month. We can't bring this up tomorrow. Okay? Because then we'll... No, but I mean, it's, it is very popular, anybody to talk to that's a recreational, active recreational, motorized recreation, runs poor. One spicy year, the flowers in the spring, you start the Florence, you come up through here, the rifle guy, because there's flowers everywhere, it's like, you know, it's a thing you want very brilliant access.
And if it's intermittent, that schedule needs to be known in advance. If it's intermittent access, that schedule needs to be known in advance, so I can't be surprised like this, but, uh, people have to be able to plan around it because of the nature of the trail, you can't have people arriving, reveal, they're by the clock, they don't, and they turn around and leave. But for a lot of people, that is just not an option. So, you know, if they get there and just put sundown in the wintertime, asking them to go back over the commitment that they made to get there is just asking, as you say, safety, or are you putting people seriously at risk to come for it?
Yes.
My name is Frank, and I've lived here all my life, and, uh, I've always been a respectful And I've always been a respectable citizen and a care of our land, our environment. And currently, I work for the state manager's sector and understand the issues of security and of your property, such as. And soon hope to retire and be able to get back there and hike and maybe hunt a little bit like I have all these years. Get back to take some photos and do some drawings and whatnot, if my legs will let me. And I just think that, I know you're going to try your best to work out a resolution and keep it open for those that respect the land and the environment. And the safety and security of your property.
Thank you for your comment. If you haven't signed in, if you would like, I'd like to have contacted the authority.
Do you think, I think you've collected everybody's email addresses. I mean, a sense of goodwill might be if you can use those emails and maybe send out a group email, let people know, I mean, I know you're expecting them to contact you, but I think an update, you know, or a timeline would be very helpful in your communication efforts.
I'm happy to.
Back to that. Just a suggestion.
Absolutely happy to do that. If you have a form for the town superior, I can, I'd be happy to submit you something or post something on there.
Yeah, I mean, we have good social media and make sure the newspapers do run the emails and stuff like that, so.
Yes.
Sure. Another thing that you'd be helpful, you know, everybody is having a recap of our discussion tonight.
Sure.
The things that you've taken in.
Absolutely.
That you've heard, you know, kind of point each, some of these comments and reassure us that we're trying to do something.
Anything additional? Do you have any questions? Thank you for your helpful sharing.